Ready to the City of Daily City's special meeting study session on Tuesday, February 15, 2022. One quick meeting about, one quick message about our COVID-19 announcement for public meetings pursuant to Government Code Section 5453. Members of Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via live teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream. So if you didn't get that, https://bit.ly/DailyCityFeb15 livestream. Or you can catch us on the local channel 27 on your local Comcast station. So today we'll be talking about developer interviews for the hotel site located at 1850 Uno Pero Cerro Boulevard. And I'll hand it over to Tatum. So go ahead, Tatum, lead the way.
Great, thank you. I hope you are all as excited as we are here. This is something that we've been anxiously awaiting. This is for the property at 1837 Uno Pero Cerro Boulevard. As you all may recall, we did do developer interviews way back in 2017 and selected a developer. And unfortunately, through the negotiation process, things did not quite work out. So we had to reissue an RFP out to the development community last July. So we released an RFP for our property that is zoned for a hotel. We sent that RFP to the hotel development community, but we also made that RFP available on our website. So that anybody who is interested in the property could make a submittal. We extended that RFP review period into October and then ultimately to December 31st of last year. We received five submittals as a result of that RFQ process. Four of them are with us tonight. We did receive a withdrawal from LF George. When they were offered an interview time, they said they were no longer interested in the property. So we have scheduled four interviews this evening with the remaining developers. In your staff report, there was a very brief summary of which each developer is proposing. And then we did provide the council their submittal packages. So you've seen their packet, their submittal package in its entirety, but you also have a summary in your staff report. So this evening, the intended interview process is that we allow each developer 40 minutes of time. So the way we advised the developers was that they would prepare a 10-minute presentation. And then after that presentation, the council can ask questions. Staff in concert with Cosmon prepared six questions that we think touch on some very important aspects of the development. And the council can ask those questions. And we would imagine, or what we're expecting is about 30 minutes of time to ask those questions and get those answers. To sort of help the council along and to keep them on track, staff is offering that we could kind of let you know when we're 25 minutes in or have a remainder of 15 minutes left so that you guys can stay on track. If you're okay with that, if you're not interested in that, that, you know, we don't have to do that, but that's what we were expecting to do. I don't want to jump too far into next steps, but the intent of tonight is just to gather information. There's not going to be any decisions made tonight. It's just to meet the developers, meet the team, and I'll go into next steps after we complete the interview. But just want to say that that's what the process is. And with that, there was a schedule of interviews provided to the council and to the developers. So with that, I can hand it back to the mayor and I don't know if there's any additional questions you might have. We're here to answer them or otherwise you can jump right in.
Are there any preliminary comments from any of my colleagues? If not, I think we're all ready to jump right into the presentation.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to at least make a comment before we start. I received a questionnaire at basically the very last minute. And I appreciate staff and Cosmon for getting together to come up with these questions. However, I feel that it should have been provided to council or council should have provided input as to perhaps additional questions or substitute questions that should have been placed on the list of questions. It could be that council is more aware of daily city centric issues and the community issues as well, which I feel the primary list of questions do not really take in effect of those additional issues. So with that being said, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Silvestre, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I concur with Councilmember Sylvester because I had stayed up and developed my own questions, even though making sure that each developer got the same question to be fair and appreciate the time that was spent. But having known, I just received this maybe 10, 15 minutes ago with the questions, which I appreciate. But I had developed four questions of my own that are more centric to our, to what I need information to make such a large decision. I know there's a time constraint, but on such a serious matter, it's such a huge development. I'm not even sure if we really should have put a time constraint on us as a council. Because as my understanding in other cities, there's not such a constraint on a council member to adhere to X, Y, Z and something so important as this decision. So I'd like to ask if there's any relevance to be able to ask as long as it's the same question to each developer. Am I able to even do that?
I'll hand it over to City Manager Ashana Mopie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to interject on behalf of staff that this, it is the staff's belief that this is an industry standard as far as providing questions in advance. However, it has been very difficult to get council together on various meetings. We thought scheduling a meeting to talk about questions may have been not the best use of time. Since right now, should the council decide to look through the questions as a group, eliminate questions, add questions, as long as all of the same questions are being asked of all of the same applicants. And I'll let Rose chime in a little bit about the legality of that. It's not typical to provide, in my, in my understanding way, those questions in advance just for, you know, just like a recruitment for a position, we wouldn't provide those questions in advance because of confidentiality. But the council is by no means bound by these questions in front of you right now and can take the opportunity to discuss them as a group, should the group decide to do that.
If I may interject as well, I was going to save the next steps for the last portion, but maybe if we talk about the next steps, it could provide some level of comfort to the council. There would be, this is really to be an introduction. So this is a guided discussion on what the proposals are. In the next steps, the recommendation would be that at a future council meeting, the council could discuss the proposals that were submitted to them. They can have a free conversation about what they liked or didn't like. And then they can choose to bring all of the developers back. They could narrow it down to a smaller group. They could say, hey, they found the perfect one and want to bring that one back and ask further more refined questions, at which time perhaps we can work with the council to develop more focused questions. So this by no means is supposed to be, you know, how you're supposed to make your ultimate decision. This was really to provide an introduction and to provide structure to that. So I think if there are a series of questions that council want to provide, I think we can probably work that into a future discussion after the council gets a sense of what the proposals are and who they're interested in sort of talking to again. So I don't know if that helps guide this.
Okay, I think there's some leeway to, you know, ask questions if you need to ask questions. I think the questions are just kind of like a standard template, but I think we're ready to, or Councilmember Justin Manalvo. We have one more comment and then dive into the presentations.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted clarity on that. I mean, obviously, it's, he said it's standard practice to just have the set of questions. So you're saying if we have further questions down the line, it would be another meeting?
I think the expectation for this meeting is that we would, yeah, we would have sort of the introduction. Then the council would have an opportunity to talk about the proposals and then see who they want to bring back. So it's kind of very much like how we do job interviews here. You have a very structured first interview and then you decide, hey, these are the candidates, I think, you know, maybe best fit. And then let's bring them ask and bring them back to ask more tailored questions. And we can work with the council on that for the second round. So I'm offering that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni, I know we have people here that already took up their time. I just wanted to make it very brief and let's get into the presentation.
I'll make it very brief. So in order to, I respect that Ms. Mother said, but in order to make the decision for the next meeting, the questions that we need to have answers to in order to make that decision may need to be asked tonight. So if you hear us ask a question, it'll be the same question for each applicant. I know that that's important, but I need answers to certain questions in order to decide who to bring back or to make that decision beginning tonight. So thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
If I may, City Attorney Emma Ryan, can you please weigh in a little bit about the questions? If there are additional questions, does the council as a body need to ask in advance or check in with each other in advance about these questions and agree to the questions? I think we're all clear that each question has to be answered of each applicant, but I'm not clear as to whether or not the council as a body needs to agree to the additional questions.
So as we indicated earlier, the questions were designed as a general preliminary interview to get to know the interviewees. And so we want to have a uniform base of questions. So as a body, if we are going to have follow-up questions or clarification type questions, it would be appropriate for the body to make that determination. And like I said, we created these questions as a general basis for us to get to know these developers. And then from the responses that you do receive, as Ms. Motherhead has indicated, no decisions will be made this evening. Only just to get to know the developers and to get to, you might have additional questions at that point to bring them back for a public meeting when the decisions shall be made. But it probably would be if, and you know, I will defer to the mayor who is, who is conducting the meeting and chairing how the protocol when the meeting will be to provide some structure and order into this meeting. If there are going to be follow-up questions, yes, the body should decide and be comfortable with those questions. I'm not trying to belabor the interview process, but I do believe that the questions are pretty much on a high level at this point to have follow-up questions further down the line.
Thank you, Rose. I know everybody is anticipating for these presentations. I just want people to be mindful of like time constraints. You know, we were able to align everybody's schedules for today. And this is just kind of a getting to know us period. We're not going and asking a hand in marriage right now. We're just asking as introductions. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on with our first presentation.
Good evening. I'm Chris Henry with Majestic Hospitality Group. It's nice to see so many familiar faces again. I hope everyone has been safe and healthy over the last two years of craziness. I'm here with Adam Suliman, who is my partner on this project. He's with Equinox Hospitality. I'm going to be sharing the presentation with you folks and then Adam and I will be more than happy to answer the questions. Tell me, just to make sure that you can see my screen, it actually says you folks disabled screen sharing. So I don't know who's in charge of the meeting, but if you can unlock that.
Just try it now, please. It should be okay.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
We can see the screen.
Perfect. Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you our proposal. We're very excited about it and, you know, still really sort of believe strong in the Daily City community and are excited to be back. So to provide you a sort of an overview, and this is really coming from the documents that we sent, which I know are in your city briefs. But we are looking to create a destination within Daily City by creating a boutique style, lifestyle hotel that draws people in from around, not only around the Bay Area and visitors from outside the city area. So we're really excited about it. We're very geared up towards having something that's really memorable, something that's special, something that is a destination unto itself. So we took a lot of time and consideration to think of something that is iconic for the city itself. So we did some renderings here, which I'm just going to, and again, none of this is finalized. These are just sort of high-level fun renderings that we came up with of what it could look like. But this is based on the following program, which is still based on a, you know, I'm going to jump a few slides ahead after you had a chance to look at the photos, just sort of reference images, set a mood piece. Some market data also. This is what sort of what we based out before I get into the program. This is what we based our comps on, looking at South San Francisco, looking at Daily City, the airport area and parts of San Francisco proper to develop a 19-property comp set. And this is what we were finding. And bear in mind that these numbers were obviously severely impacted by COVID. So I wouldn't, wouldn't want you to think that this is how your market's looking today. This was pulled last year when we sent in the submission. So the world's recovering, thankfully. There we go. Program. So we are still proposing 200 keys. This is based on a upscale asset, asset class. And we're planning on having an additional meeting space, which we're looking at about 7,000 square feet of meeting space. It's flex space, which can handle, you know, from small corporate groups all the way up to ballrooms for special events. We're looking at having two restaurant venues in addition to having a full-service bar, retail, and a rooftop. And I know a rooftop is something probably a little bit different for the Bay Area, but we think, given the location, it'd still be fun to have a rooftop venue that could be flex space as well. So this is sort of the essence of what we're looking at. We've been in talks with Marriott International, who support the project. That's something Adam had been working on, was getting their, their support for what we're doing here. And we are looking at a brand which is called AC, which is a lifestyle brand, an upscale lifestyle brand. And we feel like this is the best fit for the project that we're proposing in addition to the market demand drivers and the comps that are already existing in the area. So again, the market data that I mentioned a few minutes ago. So community involvement, this is something that's really important to us. And I think this may help answer some of the questions that you folks were talking about a few minutes ago. Is that this isn't just a hotel. It's not just about putting heads in beds, but this is actually a community anchor. We want this to be something that the community also can use. So there's some things that we're, we're looking at. Public gathering spaces is we want people to be able to, to use the public areas of the hotel to be able to hang out, to have their own meetings, grab a coffee. This isn't just for hotel guests. We're looking at measures. We know obviously cars are a big thing these days. Being the Bay Area, you folks are big on, on green initiative. So having stations set up for electric vehicles, having a community effort for allowing public transportation to pull up in front of the site to help workers come to the property. And also having programs that are using shared vehicles that don't allow, or allow, I guess I should say, guests to, to not have to rent their own cars anymore from SFO or if they're, they're flying in from another airport. We want this also to be a place that the local community can share their art. We want to be able to highlight whether they're artists and creating sculptures or they're musicians. We want this hotel again to be a place where we can help highlight the local community. That's important to us. Obviously, public safety is important as well. But also we know that the BART station is not too far away from the site. So having something where it's a pleasant arrival, both for guests coming to the hotel or going into the city, employees coming or folks visiting for an event. So doing some enhancements there for beautification. We think that's, that's a mutually beneficial thing, both for you folks, for BART and for us. So community involvement is a big thing in what we're proposing here as well. Now, tell you guys a little bit about us. So my firm, Majestic Hospitality Group, we've been around now for 12 years. We're based in Los Angeles. We predominantly work in the lifestyle, lifestyle boutique hotel space. We currently have five projects under development that are both domestic and international. We've worked on four continents now on projects and the Bay Area is, you know, it's in California. It's home to us. It's a place that we know well. I have actually three sisters up in the Bay Area. And so I guess it's still also a little bit like home for me too. But it's something we're very excited about. So Majestic, we do two things. We're both a development company as well as, as a consultancy firm. We're looking, this is as being the lead developer on the project. Equinox, who Adam Suliman represents, that is a family-owned company. They are based in the Bay Area as both a developer, an owner and an operator of hotels around the country. And we're really excited to have them on board. And then our design partners here in Los Angeles, TS Architects, we actually share office space with them. So this actually would be an in-house designed project would be on board with us as well. So we're very excited about that. Some information just on Majestic again, we're involved right now with projects as small as, we're doing a 30-room project down in Costa Rica, up to a 250-acre master plan resort project in Austin, Texas. So our gamut of the lifestyle and boutique space has a broad range of what we do. And we feel like Daily City and working with Adam and AC by Marriott, we think that that can provide a really unique opportunity for the market space. And then I will let Adam chime in here for a little bit if he wants to give a quick synopsis of him and Equinox as well. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Hi, everybody. Yeah, my name is Adam Suliman and I represent Equinox Hospitality. I'm a principal in the group. We're a proud family business. I grew up in San Francisco. And when I was a kid, I actually lived at the Hyatt in Market area. My dad used to be a senior Hyatt executive. He used to run the western region of the country for Hyatt. And then, you know, I grew up in San Francisco, as I said. I've spent a lot of time in Daily City over the years. Over the course of time, after I graduated from college, I joined our family business. We've done a lot of different projects in Texas, Arizona, Northern, Southern California, Hawaii, hotel owner, operator. We have an international project in the Middle East as well. We have an office there. And we are very much handshake kind of people. We, you know, the most important thing to us is our reputation, my father's legacy. And we've, we kind of have a broad range of portfolio as well on the hotel side. We've done deals with Hyatt, IHG, Hilton, Marriott, Choice, and most recently Sinesta, which is sort of a new hotel brand. I used to work at the W Hotels before I joined our family business, so I have an operational background. But fundamentally, what I do is a lot of the deal structuring and different acquisitions, asset management. I just wanted to point out too that, you know, the council might be meeting with several different developers, likely out of San Francisco or even out of California. I think one thing to just note is that I'm very sentimental to Daily City. As growing up in San Francisco, I spent a lot of time in Daily City. My driver's license, I got at the DMV in Daily City. When I was a kid, I spent countless times at the In-N-Out Krispy Kreme there right off 280. I went to SI in the Sunset District, so I grew up around Lake Merced. I rode crew at Lake Merced. Just last week, coincidentally, not pandering to the committee, but I was at the original Joe's there in Westlake. And my first job ever was actually at Stonestown, the mall, which now is no more anymore. And a lot of dear childhood friends from high school were born and raised in Daily City. So not only am I very proud of our hotel and real estate background and that we're a family business, but I'm also very proud to be a native San Franciscan. And I feel that like with that, I've grown up in Daily City. I get Daily City. I have close lifelong friends there. We get the culture there. And I'm very proud that we could be in contention for this project and, and really entertain, you know, at later point, any questions you all might have. So thank you.
Thanks, Adam. So I know we're getting close to our time here. So just to sum up our qualification experience, this is actually a site plan of a project that we are developing right now in Austin on Lake Travis, as I mentioned a little bit earlier. It's a 250-acre master plan. That involves a 230-key lifestyle hotel. So this is a, about an $85 million project that we're involved with right now. This is another project we're doing down in Mexico that's under construction. This is a small 55-room boutique hotel that's valued at about $20 million that we're, we're seeing through. It's actually getting, getting close to opening. It'll be opening later this summer. So we're excited. This photo's a little old. It's come a long way since then. This is one of Adam's assets that they, they own and operate, the Crown Plaza in Dallas, as well as a Hilton Garden Inn that they own. They developed and operated also in the Dallas area. These are just little examples of what we've both been up to. And then I know there's questions regarding financing. We put some examples in here that can be shared with you folks regarding some projects that, of the projects we're working on right now. For example, like our one in Mexico, the, it's an American investor. It's 100% financed with equity. There's no debt. So this is a real outlier for typical hotel projects. But it's an example. Then Lake Travis is, we're doing a more traditional 40/60, 40/60 split between equity and debt. And this is being financed with local banks in Texas. And that's sort of the end of the presentation. Again, a very high-level overview about Majestic, about Equinox, and what we're proposing to be doing in Daily City. So we're excited about it and appreciate the opportunity to present to you folks.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleagues. I see Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time and then the structure, as mentioned first, the closest one that I can get to his question that was, that was written by the staff is, thank you first of all for the great presentation. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your interest in Daily City. Really appreciate it. And the other gentleman as well, thank you for sharing your story, the closeness of the Daily City. So, okay, so open and equitable hiring practices are of great importance to the city. Please describe your approach to recruiting and selecting contractors, consultants and future tenants or employees if applicable. Please also describe your approach to the use of union labor for construction and/or operations.
Adam, do you want to, do you want to take that one?
Sure. You know, within our company, to the first part of your question about, you know, I would like to point out that we're a minority-owned family business. We really sincerely believe in empowering everybody, but you know, within our own company, we have a lot of female and, you know, LGBTQ executives and leaders. And I'm very proud of the diversity of our company. I think it makes for stronger, you know, values shown through, through having that blend of diversity. And as an executive of that company, I also like to point out that I have the same healthcare plan as somebody at our front desk. So we we I like to believe that we practice what we preach. We're from here. We believe in the politics of our our local area and and it's reflected in our company. With regards to the your question about unions, we certainly believe that, you know, the most efficient way to get the deals done and the most conducive ways of working with the communities are working through unions, specifically on the construction side. I think when it comes to an operational background, sometimes there can be operational limits within certain capacities of the hotel. So for example, the front desk or the bell staff. But our full intention is to comply with the city's, you know, guidelines and and how they'd like to see the project built. Me in giving that answer, I like to point out, it just is a very blunt way because there's there's a way to sort of make the city happy and then and then there's a way to make the project work. And I think our our sincere goal is to blend those two so that everybody kind of wins and feels like they're represented in this deal.
So in addition, is that providing healthcare, as you said, and maybe possibly local hire area standard wages and approve state apprenticeships?
Oh, 100%, 100%. I I've actually personally spoken at SF State's Hospitality School. And in the in probably '08 to 2011, that time period, I spearheaded Starwood Hotels. Starwood was a company that was bought by Marriott eventually, but for the local area in recruiting its apprenticeships, and I'm very passionate about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just intervene, I know that we discussed earlier in terms of procedure and then I'm just merely just pointing it out in terms of how you want to designate questions. You do have
Right.
questions that are six questions and Councilmember Di Giovanni did question number six. So however you want to do it, I think in in some instances where we've done these interviews, the mayor just designates the questions to the individual council members so that we would just sort of get a broader base. However, you want to, I'm just sending a guidance for you, however you want to designate the questions.
Okay, I'll probably do it like this. If I want to empower my own my colleagues, so you have the questions in front of you. If there's any of the questions that you want to ask, feel free to ask those questions.
I thought your questions were going to be coming at us like snowballs, so I'm ready to go.
Mr. Mayor, if I if I could just just call on each of us and then we'll just ask questions out there.
All right. So I guess we'll go with question one.
No, I mean, call the council member. Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, you have a question?
Yes, okay. Echoing previous councilmember DG Avani, I don't want to be redundant, like to thank, thank you all for the presentation. One of the questions that we have here, as soon as I can bring it up, here we go. I'm looking at number five because in your answer to number six, we were talking about the
What is? We don't have the question. So what is number five?
I'm going to read it to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, but before I do so, part of your answer to number six, you had made mention in regards to union and union labor in reference to operations like the front desk and the bell staff. So question number five kind of continues on with that. Will you, as a proposed project developer, also be managing the operations, services, envision in your conceptual plan? Have you estimated the number of construction related, and you did make mention about the construction related, and permanent jobs that your project will potentially generate?
So yes, our intention is to to develop, own and operate the hotel. Operation is is key to the overall picture and with Equinox on board, they are an operator based in the San Francisco area. So I think that that's comfortable in the wheelhouse. Regarding the the rest of your question, I'm actually going to ask Adam to chime in.
Yeah, I almost I almost didn't understand the question. Do you have any, which council member, would you be kind enough to maybe give maybe more detail explanation of what you're looking for there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I kind of confused you because I was interested in number six as well to what your colleague made mention that in construction, most most likely will be primarily union. However, hotel operations, that would be something different.
Well, yeah, for that I can, I can explain that. So we basically would take the the sort of San Francisco model, the same. We've worked with the local two. I've I've worked personally with the local two. And oftentimes in a lot of hotels in the city, there's been a blend of union and non, can you hear me? There's an echo. Sorry.
No, I can hear you.
Okay, there's been a blend of union, non-union positions. So I'll take the W in San Francisco, for example. You have unionized housekeeping. You have unionized food and beverage staff. You have unionized bellman. You have a non-union concierge and front desk. And so those kind of blended systems kind of help. There's a lot of unknowns that kind of creep up on a day to day basis on a on hotel operations. And sometimes in an efficiency level for both the hotel and the guest, those those sort of models provide sometimes the most efficient for for, you know, for the best kind of possible hotel to be proud of in the local area. So I guess that's probably more clarity of what I meant.
Actually, that's a good answer because I feel you folks are the expert and you know what's best. Maybe there isn't a unionized concierge and later on, you know, the right to organize and to become part of the union is very important, but I'm diverging. I I I want to get back to number five. And one of the biggest questions is how many do you expect you will potentially generate in the number of jobs?
Well, in terms of jobs, I mean, you, I I don't have an exact number, but with construction, there's direct and there's indirect jobs. There's certainly the jobs generated through construction. The indirect jobs are where the construction workers eat in the day and, you know, where are they? You know, what services and businesses are they kind of helping in Daly City as they travel and commute to the job site within the hotel operations? You know, depending on certain specifics that you all approve, if there's a restaurant, for example, if there's a rooftop bar, you know, the size of the hotel, etc. But there's a considerable amount of jobs generated. And not only are there a significant amount of jobs generated, you know, we cater to apprenticeships, as the previous councilwoman mentioned. So it kind of sort of harboring the next generation of talent and youth guidance, I think that's tremendously important. I've personally, that's one of my big areas of passion. And then in addition to that, in addition to the jobs generated, there's a tremendous amount of tax revenue generated, both you know, based on the hotel guests that stay, but also amongst, you know, all the workers, you know, in terms of, you know, payroll and that kind of capacity. So it as as we see it, there's obviously the devils in the details, but it's it's, you know, I really believe it's sort of a win-win for both groups that, you know, you get a a brand shiny new hotel. But, you know, tremendously benefits the community. It's, you know, increased job opportunity and 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 something, an amenity that Daly City can be proud of that people, instead of doing their conference or their meeting, say in San Francisco or in San Mateo or San Bruno or wherever, you know, Daly City will be more of that sort of focal point and and kind of front center with this new facility.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Thank you.
The other thing I'd like to chime in, Mr. Sylvester, is that as if we have the opportunity to go forward on to to another round, we can also come back with additional information, knowing that that is a key question to you folks.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'll see. Councilmember Justin Manello. Would you like to ask a question?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sure. You know, really, you know, if you're selected as the developer, what is the timeline for your project implementation? I mean, I think this is something very important to to all of us to understand the timing. Is it also, I think, one important piece given, you know, being on the council in 2017 as well, is how will it be financed, equity, debt or both? So please discuss the financial worth with all of your project as well as the timeline for project implementation.
Sure, happy to. So the the easier of the two questions to answer is the financial side is that we are taking this and our underwriting has been based on a 60 40 debt to equity to debt split, so 60% debt, 40% equity. That model is then also based on equity that's been contributed both by by Adam's company, my company, as well as raising additional equity to finish the capital stack. The debt wise is that we would be looking at working with with local and regional banks, provide construction financing and then rolling that into a permanent financing once the hotel is open. To answer your question regarding the timeline, we would like and hope for it to be more expeditious than than 2017. We, our anticipation would be is that a one year timeline of entitlements and permitting on top of six months of of design work. And then a two year period of building the hotel. So you're looking at about three and a half years to complete the project. Should everything go according to plan? Now, we know based on our other projects that we're working on right now, because of COVID and and budgetary constraints, some cities are moving a little bit slower in planning departments. So there is that that one challenge is that we can only move as fast as the the planning and building departments are allowing us because we know we still have to go through the entitlement and permitting process. So three and a half years is my hope. If everything goes smoothly with with planning, planning and building department, then we'll keep aiming for that timeline.
So just to be clear, you said three years at the
Three and a half, three and a half years. So
Three and a half years at the moment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Adam, and I got your hand up. Feel free to chime in.
I just wanted to say we're 25 minutes in, so we have 15 minutes if we want to stick to this.
Got it. Thank you for the for the time. Check. Vice Mayor Ray Bonator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask question number number two. Here goes. The concepts outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both the proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community and economic benefits, for example, tax revenues and amenities that your project will provide if it is selected. Thank you.
So Adam had touched on taxes a little bit, but you know, there are payroll taxes, there's sales tax, there's bed tax, there's property tax. So the hotel does generate quite a bit of revenue for the city. And then that's before you start calculating in, hopefully, we know we're hiring a lot of of local folks who then are spending money in other parts of the economy locally. So that I think is the economic incentive for the city. We also on on our end, you know, we see this as an opportunity, as far as amenities go, to address a few things. As one is is going back to our initial presentations, we want to be able to create gathering places that aren't just for hotel guests. We want this to be some of that is open and used by the local community. That includes the restaurants, that includes bars, that includes the rooftop as well as the event space. So, you know, we see this as something that is integral to helping create and and further the development along Unibrow Sarah Boulevard, but also create an anchor which is a place where people do want to use and hang out and spend time at. You know, again, putting heads in beds is is one part of the equation. The other part of the equation is getting engaged with the community. I think the one other community benefit that I think is important, at least at least to me, is I think also it's important, I really enjoy highlighting local arts. And that's not just art as in paintings, but that's art as in music, that's art as in sculpture, that is art as in in food and wine. So we want to be able to exhibit and share all of these things because that's what really engages people because travelers today are looking for authentic, local and unique. And being able to do that is going to be, I think, integral to making this a special place.
Yeah, the only thing I would add that was perfect is that typically, too, you know, as of now, there's not really a true venue that, you know, someone can book a large gathering and and have and host in Daly City. I think with meeting space, particularly too, you can bring in groups outside of Daly City and and have them there. And when you have a a large group, naturally, Monday through Friday, usually they tend to be more corporate or business traveler. Weekends, we refer to as leisure transient, they go out locally and use the local restaurants, the local shops. So, you know, a lot of those dollars should be spent in Daly City and not people go back to their respective San Francisco or down the peninsula or wherever and spend money there. So there's a lot of direct benefit the city could have in economic value there.
Well, I think one of the things that Adam and I, we've talked about quite a bit over the years on this project is, you know, there is sort of a gap or a void right now for this style and and quality and size of product in this in the Daly City area of of the Bay. And we we sort of want to plug that gap is that you don't have to stay out at SFO and you don't have to stay down at the Embarcadero that, you know, there is an option to stay closer. I know from family and friends, there's a lot of other amenities and and demand drivers in the local community there. And they have to leave, as Adam was just saying, to to find comparable accommodations elsewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of business opportunity. Sorry, not to keep going on that one, but there's like, you have the Lake Merced Golf Club, you have San Francisco Golf Club, the Olympic Club. These are venues that throughout, you know, half the year, there's weddings every weekend. And pretty much unequivocally, all those guests get bussed down in from the peninsula or in the city. If you had a sizable hotel, you could accommodate a lot of that and have those direct tax revenue dollars and people spending money in local Daly City businesses.
Well, thank you, Mr. Henry and Mr. Solomon, for your time. Thank you for your presentation. And I know that we have more presenters to to get through. So I'll I'll ask my question in the following round due to the time constraints. So let's go ahead to the next presenter. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See, Tatum, I'm not sure who's next, but is there like a order?
Yeah, so our next our next development team is JM McLennan Development. So I will call on Bob McLennan, but if he wants to pass it over to someone else. It could be his desire.
Okay, I guess we're on, huh? Okay, all right, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for this for this opportunity. So first off, I'd like to introduce our team. Some of us are on the the Zoom meeting and others are not. But first off, Bob Eaton. Bob is our hotel advisor. Bob and I go back, you know, 25 years of our hotel relationship. Bob is an absolute powerhouse in his in his involvement with the western states in the in the hotel scene. Next, Jeff Heller. Jeff and Eric, I've been using Jeff in his company for over 20 years. Jeff has been a great friend and just a powerhouse in his in his knowledge regarding worldwide architects, worldwide structures, I should say. Sorry, I'm a little nervous here at the start. I'll I'll catch up, I guarantee it. Eric Lundquist, Eric has been in, he's been instrumental in the design, you know, of of our hotel. Lila Raposa from from our financial group, Lee has been responsible for financing our project since 2013. You know, in this crazy, crazy time we're in, Lee's been able to adapt and he's been able to provide financing for any time that that our financing is is required. Adrian Tissier, Bay Relations, everyone knows Adrian. She's our lead advisor with this project. She's our eyes and ears for the the entire, the entire event here. Adrian's knowledge of San Mateo County and in particular Daly City is unmatched in any circle in in North County and San Mateo County. is unmatched in any circle in in North County and San Mateo County. And our Brad Welbin of Bridge Housing, we were introduced to Bridge, Bridge Housing by Adrian. While discussing the the housing portion of our development, it was apparent that Bridge Housing was going to be, was going to be a great fit for for what we're doing. So what I would like to do now is we have produced a video about our project. And then after that, I will come back online. So here we go.
My family dating back to the nineteen fifties has a history of operating hotels in the Bay Area. I have deep roots here. I was raised here. I went to high school here. I started my business here and I have a strong connection with this community. I've known Bob for almost forty years. He's been extremely committed to Daly City. Not only having his business here for quite some time, but also employing a lot of the residents of Daly City. He supports the high schools, he supports the local nonprofits in the area, and he's and he's always involved in what's going on in Daly City. Bob is a very sharp entrepreneur, someone that we can turn to to actually make this development happen. Our proposal at eighteen thirty seven Junipar Serra will include two hundred and thirty residential and hotel units, a thirty one thousand square foot conference center and a thirty three thousand square foot athletic club. Our development will establish a great base of income for the city.
Our proposal is the best solution for this site. It combines lodging, health club, meeting and conference space on an excellent site centrally located in the Bay Area and accessible to the BART network.
In our development, the housing component is going to have a variable of short term and long term rentals. Either one of those is going to provide income to the city of Daly City.
This hybrid model is a perfect fit with this site. It not only capitalizes on the obvious lodging demand that emanates from the airport and the city along the BART line, but it also captures a very valuable component of residential development. That development combined with that hotel demand provide a very financeable project and be very attractive in the marketplace.
Because of the site, the building has angles to add into account and used it to create a stunning building. Because the site is open all around and there's actually sort of a park behind it, you'll have light from all directions coming in. The views toward the ocean will exist when you get above about the third story, so you'll have excellent views.
Likely, the top three floors will be the residential component. Those residents will enjoy all the services associated with being in a hotel in terms of getting maid service, food and beverage delivery, parking, et cetera. Meanwhile, the lower floors will house a select service hotel.
The health club is exactly what this place needs. We need opportunities and places to go where we can not only work out, but meet friends socially and also recreationally. Our health club provides an anchor tenant that's been in business since nineteen seventy nine. Seventy percent of our members come from the city of Daly City. Taking care of our health and our mental health especially, getting to an athletic club is really, really important.
Another component of this development is a business and event center. This is going to be a major component of the entire development that will drive not only hotel business, but also afford the city of Daly City the opportunity to hold gatherings and events here, which have been so direly missed for many, many years.
I've always felt that the city of Daly City needs an event center to house small and large events. Being on the BART line makes us an absolute perfect location. This development is a great opportunity for our community here in Daly City. Bob is the right person to get this project done. I can't think of something more exciting than what we're trying to build here. We're locally sourcing everything. It'll all be union labor. There'll be lots of jobs. Daly City will be proud of of having all this work show up in this area. I really want to do this project. I have witnessed over the past twenty years, all the approvals and none of them have come through. We've got skin in the game. We're coming up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deposit with benchmarks, and I really look forward to working with the city.
Okay. A special thanks to Brian Kingston Media for that video. He did a great job, and I think he shows the real spirit on what we're what we're proposing for this for this development. Next slide. So this is just that, you know, the the initial drawing that the Jeff Heller Group put together. Wonderful design. I think we're very happy with it. Next, we're going over the, I'll go over three or four of the drawings. This is an elevation showing the the parking, the lobby for both the hotel and the and the residential units. The next floor will be the, excuse me, the conference center, the next floor will be the athletic club. Let's see, next. This is the lobby, I'm sorry, in the conference lobby in the hotel. This will be the the conference center and, you know, with the conference center, this is the only conference center, to the best of my knowledge, that is on the BART tracks. So coming from the airport, coming from San Francisco, we think the more we've looked into this, this is a a great component to our to our project. The next slide is the fitness center. You know, we are, I was thinking of this, this is, you know, we're the Joseph Westlake of the of the fitness world, right? The club has been here since nineteen seventy nine. It is extremely successful. We're really looking forward to to putting up a new home for for our club. This is a typical floor plan of the hotel units and the residential. I think we have six floors of this. So the next phase of our our presentation is is basically this. As far as a a financeable project, our submitted project, because of its variables, is the most financeable based on our our experience. You know, having a hotel and residential component and a health club and a conference center makes us really attractive to a number of number of lenders. If this was a hotel only development, it would eliminate fifty to seventy five percent of the of the potential lenders out there. And this site has proven over and over again that a hotel only project is really, really tough to get built. The next, as far as producing income for the city of Daly City, we feel that with our mix of of uses, we will exceed the city's goals in getting the site to produce income for the city of Daly City. We will work with the staff in the council to assure to assure its long term success. Next, we're putting skin in the game. We are offering the city of Daly City a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deposit with a ten month timeframe to negotiate the final decree, final agreement. If we need an initial, an additional ninety days, we will provide an extra fifty thousand dollars in an additional deposit to get the the extra time. At the end of the term, these funds will be nonrefundable, passed through the city, passed through to the city. And, you know, I I gotta put this out there. We are not here to string things out. We want this to be built. If we can't do it, we're going to get out of the way and let this project move forward. We're going to make it happen, but just to let everybody know, this is not going to be a one year, two year deal. And oh, by the way, we can't get it done. This is either going to happen or it's not. And I'm telling you, it's going to happen. Next, it's a vibrant project. In closing, you know, I want this project to have the energy and the and the design appeal that the city of Daly City is 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 proud of. Our development will have will have action and a steady stream of activity throughout the day. It will have the wow factor that a hotel only project will not have. We will have the real gateway to the peninsula that we've all been looking for. So we're available for questions. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLennan, for your presentation and movie.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're we're running the video here. This is basically a finished project. I apologize.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Great rendering, by the way, in terms of in terms of this movie, and I'd like to open it up to my colleagues. Let's go ahead and and stay with the same format. We'll go with Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McLennan, for being here and all your partners. Great presentation. And I know your interest in Daly City, you know, in the history that we all know. That history isn't old, but history as in long time history. Okay, so question number six says, open and equitable hiring practices are of great importance to the city. Please describe your approach to recruiting and selecting contractors, consultants and future tenants or employees if applicable. Please also describe your approach to the use of union labor for constructions and or operations. And because of the last thing, to be fair, I think that that would include from the first gentleman, when you utilize your general contractors and subcontractors, when he went through the thing to use state accredited approved apprenticeships, providing healthcare and local hire and Bay Area standard wages. Thank you.
Okay. Our entire project from the start to the finish of construction will be, union labor will be used. I'm going to keep it as simple as that. There isn't going to be any attempt to use nonlabor construction firms. We will do the best that we can and make sure that union labor is used throughout the throughout the product. As far as our operations go, I've got a, what I think, a great track record with our current, our current facility. We have a diversified staff living in the city of Daly City. It's it's a wonderful pool of people like anyone else. It's it's really tough getting people to, excuse me, getting people hired and bringing them on board. But our current staff has adapted to the the current environment and then we're we're happy, right? And now we we're hiring a lot of high school kids, which I'm sure will do the same thing, you know, with the with the hotel conference center and and the existing club.
Right. To piggyback that on the on that, when you were saying the high school kids, which is great, does that include also that, again, like you said, it's a hundred percent labor for the construction part, but state accredited approved apprenticeships as well and providing the healthcare and the local hire, as you were mentioning, and providing Bay Area wages, like you said, if it's going to be a hundred percent union?
Yeah.
Set of operations as well?
Yes, so both, you know, our our athletic club is is not union, not unionized, you know, to be fair. So but we we pay above prevailing wage. We offer internships. Our physical therapy department is one of the leaders in interning future physical therapists in the area. So again, I can only go by our track record. If anyone wants to, you know, to to look at that and to see our higher, our current hiring practices, you'll see that we go over and over and above.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLennan. Thank you to your partners and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You, Councilmember Glenn Sevester.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLennan. Good to see you again, and thank you to your team and your presentation. And I want to ask one of our questions, and I think it's a very important one. Matter of fact, they're all important. If you are so the selected developer, what is the anticipated timeline for your project? You almost got into it and you said, you know, you're going to just move, move and put additional deposit if ninety days is needed. You started out with about nine months for permitting. But what is the anticipated timeline for the project implementation? And how will it be finance, equity, debt, or both? Please discuss financial wherewithal.
Okay, as far as the, you know, the, we're allocating ten months to work the deal out with with you guys, staff in regards to the the finer finer details you know, of the project. We're anticipating it, you know, probably thirty to thirty to thirty six months of construction time, meaning after after we strike the deal, we still have to do the drawings, we still have to, you know, change things up as far as what the city's needs are and our needs. And so that's that's going to take a little bit of time. So we're looking at about a thirty six month, I I wish I could say, you know, three years, we're going to have a grand open. But but that's our goal. So that that's what we're going to do. You know, as far as the, you know, the financing part of this, because of the, again, if it was hotel only, you you got a tough gig. It's going to be a really tough one. But because we have the residential and our existing athletic club, the club is going to fund all of the soft costs that go into this site. So again, when we bring in the financing through GSR, it's going to have a complete project, and there isn't going to be any little hidden fees as far as, you know, the normal soft costs that go into this. So we have over a million dollars set up just for the soft costs on this site. Depending on what the city comes up with as far as the purchase price, you know, all of those things are floating. But we're sure that we can we can handle them. So so timeline, you know, that's what we're looking at, you know, as far as what the hotel market is going to be like when we open up, you know, that's that's the crystal ball. We're all in the same boat, right? We really, we just don't know. But we're confident that, again, if the hotel world is in a world of hurt, the athletic business, which we would have never thought would be in the same boat or in the boat that we're in today, but we survived it and the the health and the mental part of our health is so important. And I think a lot of our civic leaders are seeing that. So the club portion of it is really our strong variable. It's very profitable. And we can put that towards any any debt service, any negative debt service, we can handle it with the club.
Thank you.
Moving along, we'll have Councilmember Justin Lemonolo.
Hello. So the question I had this evening is you know, the city intends to sell the land at fair market value, not involving any financial subsidy. Will your proposal reflect this understanding? If not, what is the expectation?
Yeah, as I said, we intend to take down the site full full price. I'm sure the city is willing to discount it. I'm just being a smart guy here. Whatever the current, whatever the adjusted price is, we will come to terms with that based on previous appraisals that the site has had over the years. We've got a pretty good indication on where we're going to land with that. So yes, we will be taking down the site fee simple.
Thank you.
You, Councilmember Justin, Omenalo, that's Vice Mayor Ray Bonator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McLennan, the concepts outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both the proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community and economic benefits, for example, tax revenues and amenities that your project will provide if it is selected. Thank you.
So as far as our our development, basically, we're proposing a hybrid in the housing and the hotel world. Every one of the units that are going to be be produced, whether it be for housing or hotel, will have a, will basically have a kitchen, kitchen, kitchenette put into it. Construction costs doing this, this particular hybrid, yes, it will be more, but it gives us the variable to stay on top of, well, basically, whatever, you know, if the hotel world is in a in a great recovery, then, you know, we'll be renting hotel rooms. If, in fact, it's stumbling and we need to do short term rentals monthly, we'll have that variable, you know, to make it work. The TOT tax, I know what the city of Daly City needs, right? The TOT tax, I know what the city of Daly City needs, right? And it, it's the last thing it needs is a little thirty-room hotel that's going to create, you know, X amount of dollars for the city. I know this during our negotiations with the city, we'll basically put a floor, you know, on top of, you know, whatever other agreements that we have. But again, with this particular design, it gives us the variable to make things work for the city on a monthly basis. And I'm sure that we're going to exceed the city's projection regarding the TOT tax.
And then I'll get to ask a question now. So please describe the approach to your proposed venue. To what extent has an analysis of the market feasibility been performed? And what were the related findings?
I'm going to punt here a little bit, and Bob Eaton, I'm, I'm going to put you on, on the line here. Bob, again, our hotel advisor and knows, you know, the ins and outs of the, of the hotel world. But I, as far as studies go, Bob, can you address that?
Yeah, Bob, I have to say, first of all, listening to these conversations, we all have to recognize that we're in a new world right now. I spent the better part of thirty years doing financial projections and market studies for hotels. And we were able to bank upon historical trends and the way things worked. Today, we've got so many unknowns out there as we enter this world. The, the, the market study, the formal market study has not been done. It will be done day one. It'll begin, and it'll be the basis of the whole development. We're going to be doing a study of not only the hotel business and the transient business for the hotel, but also for short and midterm apartment rentals. So it's going to be an extensive market study. It's going to be very expensive, and it'll be undertaken on day one. That will form the basis for our plans going forward.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. McLennan, for your in-depth presentation and movie. And let's go ahead and move on to our next presenters. Who do we have next online here?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate it for your time.
Our next development team is Phase Three Real Estate Partners. So I think maybe Alex Sabrato will be presenting.
Yeah, I think it's a little confusing. I think we're, there's a number of us named Alex Sabrato. I don't know if there's any.
That's why I thought it was a good test.
So you'll have to deal with us introducing ourselves. But Alex, why don't, really quick, I'm Mike Garrity, I'm the president of Phase Three Real Estate Partners. And Alex will go ahead and get us started, but I'll talk a little bit later about our partnership with Bain Capital Real Estate and sort of our vision for the site.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all very much for your time tonight. My name is Alex Sabrato. I'll be representing Phase Three Real Estate Partners. Joining me today, we have Mike Garrity, the president and partner of the company, Adam Cashner, our lead construction manager, and a few members of the EPS Economic Consulting Team, who helped us out with our analysis. We are really excited to present our proposal for a two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-square-foot R and, R and D tower. We're going to start off our presentation with Mike Garrity explaining who Phase Three is, who Bain Capital is, going over our exclusion, our exclusive relationship with Bain Capital and our Genesis branded joint venture. From there, we're going to go over a few of our example projects. In the second section, we'll discuss our recent investments into Daly City and explain why we feel this is a compelling investment opportunity for our joint venture. So Phase Three is an R and D developer. So in the third section, we'll discuss what R and D is and why R and D use is actually highly preferable to the current proposed hotel use. And finally, we'll get into the specifics of our proposal and present some exciting visuals for you guys to all see. From here, I'm going to hand over to Mike.
Right. So, I mean, Phase Three has been around since two thousand, but really started before that, you know, where my partner and I began working with life science companies to, to help them solve their real estate needs. And, and so for a number of years, we were building space in what was a very immature market. But over the last decade, the industry itself is really richer, and so is the, the real estate. And what we've seen is that San Francisco and the Bay Area is one of the major hubs in the U.S. And so we, we wrote a business plan in twenty fourteen to seek large institutional capital to go create a portfolio of real estate. And through that, we actually partnered up with Bain Capital out of Boston to do a large-scale partnership in, in the key clusters in the U.S. So we have properties in San Diego, San Francisco, and Boston. And so, you know, that partnership has now been running since twenty fifteen. And we have a portfolio of about four and a half million square feet. The vast majority of that is actually in the North Peninsula. You know, the project that we're probably most known for in the Bay is that for five years, we owned the SAP Tower, the Blue Towers, just north of SFO in South San Francisco. We built the twenty-one-story sister building there. And so our team is solely focused on research and development and, and growing that portfolio and very focused on the North Peninsula. And so that's how Daly Civic City came into our orbit. And as Alex mentioned, and you may see it behind me, we did purchase DC Station, which will be rebranding to our Genesis brand in Daly City last year. And so we think we really like the dynamics for life science companies in Daly City. And, and if you look at Bain Capital and our partnership, it, it's still growing. So they, as a company, have six-point-two billion of, of equity across over five hundred assets. They're the twenty-fourth largest private equity company in the world. And our specific venture with them has, you know, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-million of new money, but with really one-point-nine-billion of available cash to do deals. So we're very well capitalized. This is not a new thing for us. We're one of the very well-known players in the space and, and have done quite a bit in the North Peninsula. Just last year alone, we acquired over a million square feet of new projects and did, you know, the other piece that's really important, especially in a market like Daly City, is, is, well, we don't potentially have a lot of life science companies. How do you get companies to come here? We have a lot of relationships with these companies. Last year alone, we did eighteen leases, over seven-hundred-fifty-thousand square feet. And I think the fact that we purchased a larger building than what we're going to propose today next door speaks to our belief in, in the market. And so that's, that's a little bit about our partnership. And, and, and the fact is, it is exclusive. And so Alex, go ahead and go next slide.
All right, yeah. So as Mike mentioned, Phase Three has a portfolio of a few million square feet in Boston, San Diego, San Francisco. But in the North Peninsula specifically, we, we have over two million square feet of new ground-up construction that's either been completed, is in process, or is planned. Most notables are three-hundred-seventy-four-thousand-square-foot Genesis South San Francisco Tower. We sold that in twenty-twenty in a record-breaking sale for over a billion dollars. We're currently closing in on the CFO of our five-hundred-sixty-thousand-square-foot Genesis Marina Project. And we have another million square feet within twenty minutes from Daly City. Overall, the punchline here is that we are extremely capable of large-scale developments. And this actually represents a fairly small project for us. And as you can see from our images, our buildings are transformative and beautifully designed. So we're looking at the site for R and D use. We'll explain a little bit more about what that means on the next slide. But just in general, there's been an explosion in national demand for this type of space. There's an enormous supply shortage that's caused double-digit rent growth over the past few years. Despite this shortage, until Phase Three came along, no one, none of the life science developers had invested in Daly City. And, and, in May of twenty-twenty, in May of twenty-twenty, Phase Three purchased the building next door, DC Station, formerly known as, known as Pacific Plaza for a speculative R and D conversion. It was viewed as risky at the time, but we, we've since learned that tenants really want to be in Daly City. We've had enormous leasing success there so far. And this actually represents a very exciting opportunity for us because it allows tenants in those buildings to expand into, into the new building. And that's a huge differentiating factor for us. So in summary, there's a few million square feet of demand for R and D space, and we strongly believe that this project would be a great fit in our portfolio. We, we know the economics based on the project next, next door, which is twice the size. And we have relevant construction costs based on a few hundred thousand square feet of ongoing construction process, projects that we have in the election. So I'm going to explain quickly what R and D is and why it's much more preferable to a hotel. Research and development encompasses a wide range of uses, including technology, food and agriculture, medical devices and drug research, and includes companies like Google, Qualcomm, and Johnson and Johnson. Generally, in R and D spaces, just a typical office building with more power, more air circulation, stronger floors, and often contains research ventures like those shown in photos. That photo is actually from one of, one of the Phase Three projects. So the most important question for you all to consider here is why should, why should we be building an, an R and D project where it was, it's meant to be a hotel site? We, we had economic planning and systems, and economic consultants perform some analysis for us. And we found that R and D is superior to hotel in nearly every metric. Our building will provide an equivalent TOT revenue stream, provide more in annual taxes, better jobs, and more jobs, have a more profound impact on the local economy, and makes more sense for Daly City in the current environment. I'll touch on these briefly right now. In terms of TOT revenue, R and D buildings are not subject to TOT. In lieu of TOT, Phase Three will work with Daly City to, to determine a fixed annual payment. Having a fixed payment will provide more transparency, stability, and potentially greater revenue to Daly City, as hotel performance is currently at its lowest level in, in decades with a very uncertain future. In terms of taxes, an analysis of assessed values in surrounding regions shows that R and D buildings can be expected to generate nearly twice the amount of tax revenue as a, as a hotel. Moving on to jobs, R and D use will create high-quality jobs. Less than three percent of jobs in Daly City are in the STEM field, and that's a number that's well below some of the surrounding cities. R and D jobs typically require advanced degrees and are high-paying. The average employee at an R and D building makes three times that of a hotel worker. Not only are the jobs higher quality, but there are more jobs, roughly four and a half times as many. That would be a huge benefit to Daly City, as only five percent of its residents actually work in the city. Combining these two factors means there's nearly four times the amount of annual salaries paid to employees within an R and D building. Moving on to local economy impact, R and D employees will spend more money in Daly City than hotel visitors will. This is a function of the greater number of employees, roughly about six-hundred-thirty, and the fact that hotel visitors are likely to be traveling in and out of Daly City, whereas R and D employees will stay inside the city. Lasted, most importantly, hotel occupancy sits at its lowest, lowest level in years. Combine that with the fact that there are over eleven thousand rooms within twenty minutes. That's resulted in virtually no hotel development over the past few years. There is, however, a one-hundred-forty-two-room hotel that's been approved in Daly City. So for a few reasons, in our opinion, hotel is not the highest and best use of the site. It's R and D. So going over our proposal, we plan on building a two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-square-foot R and D building, seven stories, a hundred-and-twenty-six feet in height, which is slightly below the DC Station building, will be providing a twenty-five-thousand-square-foot event center for public use and a nine-thousand-square-foot rooftop terrace that has sweeping views of Daly City. Many of our projects have publicly available space. We, we created performing art centers, restaurants, gyms, and other amenities, and found that these public spaces add a vibrance to the campus and something that we, we'd be really excited about, and we're more than willing to work with Daly City on, on, on introducing any, any concepts. As far as timing is concerned, there's a downside to our proposals that, is that the site is not currently approved for R and D use. So there would be about a, a year period, we expect to kind of work on the entitlements. As soon as the entitlements are, are completed, we, we plan to start construction. We will not be waiting for any tenants to start construction. All of our, most of our projects have been built on spec, including the five-hundred-fifty-thousand-square-foot Genesis Marina campus. We mentioned the three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-square-foot Genesis North Power. The million-square-foot project will build on spec. It's not something that we'll wait on. We will start construction immediately. So I have a few renderings here for, for everyone to look at. This is a view from the north. We have a view from the street here. View from the northwest. Then just a quick summary, when working with Phase Three, you're working with a best-in-class developer. We have rock-solid financial backing. We have proven investment pieces through our ownership of the building next door, which is twice the size. We know relevant construction costs. We have a few million square feet, you know, across multiple cities. It's, it's a sector that we understand well, and Bain Capital understand well. And, and finally, our proposed R and D plan will, will provide much greater benefits to Daly City than our own. So I'll pause there, and we can open it up to Q and A.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for the great presentation. I'll start with that, that question and number six. Open and equitable hiring practices are of great importance to the city. Please describe your approach to recruiting and selecting contractors, consultants, and future tenants, or employees if applicable. Please also describe your approach to the use of union labor for construction and operations. And then I added in addition to the prior, people to be fair, to you, when you utilize your general contractors and your subcontractors, will that include straight, state-accredited, approved apprenticeships, providing healthcare, local hire, and Bay Area standard wages in labor? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. Most of our construction projects in the Bay have been with union labor. That is definitely something we would assess on this project. Unlike a hotel, we have very little, we have very few employees on site. So whether or not the employees are union, that's going to be a function of who the tenants are. And then in terms of apprenticeship, that's, that's not something that we've looked into before, but it's certainly something that we can look into for this project.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's worth noting that we have had one project labor agreement, so we've worked through that with the trade council. And, and so we're, you know, and as Alex mentioned, you know, to build a, a project of the, the quality and scale that we're looking at here, it's very likely that we'll be working with the, the unions to build that project.
Okay, so yeah, that, that was that project labor agreement that you already have, right? You have one.
We had one on a prior project, so it's something we're familiar with. We don't have them on every project, but again, in, in the Bay Area specifically, what we found is most of the contractors and subcontractors who can perform the level of work that, that we need in these projects are, are union shops.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, the bad, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Okay, thank you very much. My question is, if you are the selected developer, developer, what is the anticipated timeline for the project implementation? And how will it be financed? Equity, debt, or both? Please discuss your financial wherewithal. I saw a part on your slide, and one of the bullet points were the financial wherewithal.
Thank you very much for the question. You know, as, as mentioned, the site's currently not approved for R and D use. That's something that we've worked with the city on. We expect it to take about twelve months. And from there, we will start construction as soon as we can. As mentioned, we do not wait for any tenants to start building. We start building right away. So overall, we would expect it to be about a two-and-a-half to three-year process. And then in terms of financing, we finance most of our projects with about sixty to sixty-five percent debt. We have a staple pool of lenders going to lend us. Last year alone, we, we raised over one-point-four-billion dollars. And then on the equity side, we have our exclusive relationship with Bain Capital with seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-million dollars waiting to be deployed.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Councilmember Justin Menalo.
Sorry for the extra background noise. So if you, well, well, the city intends to sell the land at fair market val- will the city intend to sell the land at fair market values, not involving any financial subsidy? Will your proposal reflect this understanding? And if not, what is the expectation?
Thank you very much. Yes, it's our, it's our intention to purchase the site at fair market value.
I, I'd like to just add though, you know, with a rezoning would come a city discretionary process. And so we could tell you what we think the value of the site is for the square footage we're proposing today, but through that discretionary process, there could be other requests or things. Um, and so, you know, while we want to purchase the land fee simple, there's more. Um, the downside to our proposal is that rezoning, but in that there's, there's the opportunity for the city to ask for things for that rezoning. And so that's what it comes as a whole financial package, I guess, is the one thing we'd say. And I think it's also important to clarify is Alex mentioned the T O T, um, fixed fee that we would provide because we know this isn't a hotel. That would also be, you know, in addition to, so we purchased the land, but have this ongoing fixed fee to replace that lost income because we know you're pivoting away from a hotel.
Thank you.
Um, Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura.
Oh, yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was, um, tending to my dad. Um, what was the last question that was asked?
I asked about, um, when they are acquiring the land.
Okay.
Pay a fair market value. Yes.
Okay, then let me ask number two. The concepts outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both the proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community and economic benefits, tax revenues and amenities that your project will provide if it is selected. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. Um, yeah, as we touched on our, our proposal, our project will provide an equivalent T O T tax revenue as out there at hotel developments. Um, our project should reduce about twice the amount of annual tax revenue to Daly City. Um, and then in terms of, of, of community benefits, we have a twenty-five thousand square foot event center, a nine thousand square foot, uh, public terrace that'll be open. Um, and it's very possible that we'll incorporate other, other publicly available amenities like a cafe and fitness center.
I think the, the thing I'd add to that too is the durability of what we are proposing is much better. With the hotels, as we just saw, you have high variance in, in sort of what that T O T tax might be when occupancy falls. Whereas, you know, we're looking to do something that's much more sustainable. And I think the other half of that question is what's the benefit to us? And, and, and I think it's something though, that is really for, for even Daly City, which is this becomes a campus for life science and, and starts to bring, uh, that use to this market uh, in a special way. And, and we think by having a few buildings here uh, along Junipress Avenue is a, is a real opportunity to do something special. And so that's, you know, we probably wouldn't be pursuing this project if we didn't own the larger building down the street. Uh, but we think it's a gigantic opportunity, uh, to be able to do something with them together.
Okay. Um, and I'll have, I'll take the last question was, uh, please describe the approach to your proposed land use. To what extent has an analysis of a market feasibility been performed and what were some related findings?
Sure. Thank you very much. Um, so we are very, very fortunate to own the building next door. Um, and we have all the comps that we need. We've experienced tremendous leasing activity at that building. So we know that our tenants love the area. We know that our tenants want to be there. We have construction costs, um, from, from projects within, you know, fifteen minute driving radius. So we are extremely confident in, in the feasibility of our, our proposal.
You have a really unique site because it's located in this center of transportation. If you go up and down the peninsula, there aren't very many spaces like this uh, to do a project where you can walk to Bart, um, where you can easily access it from the freeway, uh, that have incredible sweeping views. And so, you know, that isn't lost on us. Um, and, and so it's, it's with, uh, when we look at it and think about, um, you know, the land use, it's just an incredible opportunity.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Very thorough. Um, provided a different, um, framework, um, considering, you know, this land uses for a hotel. And thank you for, uh, providing us with a deeper awareness of the potential of this site. Um, and we have our last presenter, I guess, Tatum, I'll shoot it back to you.
Um, our next presenter would be Eileen Cantor. Um, we're actually running a bit ahead of schedule, so, but it does appear that Eileen Cantor is here. So, um, I can turn it over to her for the next presentation.
Good evening, everyone. This is Eileen Cantor of A F Cantor, Inc. And, um, my partner investor is Ray Bahai of IBF Hospitality. I just want to apologize. I'm, uh, in Colorado currently and, uh, unfortunately I've had an asthma flare up since yesterday. I was at the hospital today. And so pardon me if my voice is, i- if I'm gasping for air. So I apologize. Um, it, I didn't plan on it, but, uh, Ray would be joining me in, um, in about, uh, seven minutes. He's in the car because we didn't anticipate that we were going to be on, um, this early. He's currently in Dallas, Texas. So, um, would you like me, I can start already.
Sure. Um, I guess we could just start with some preliminary things, um, just to get us warmed up before we dive into the details.
So I understand, um, uh, council members and mayor, vice mayor. Um, I know, um, some of you, uh, disagreed originally with, uh, that I, uh, unfortunately had to pull out with my previous partners. Um, it, you know, it happens. Sometimes partnerships doesn't work and, you know, I have to move on. But I didn't give up on this, um, dream of mine to be part of the community at Daly City. Um, I'm still, um, threading water to, to make this deal happen. And I have a very solid, um, um, money behind me. And I'm also part of, um, Ray, um, Ray's company that we're forming a REIT. So hold on one second. Uh, I apologize. He's just, uh, trying to get on, on the link. I apologize. Hold on one second.
Not a problem.
Um, Joseph, can, you sent it to the ray.bahai@IBFhospitality email, correct?
I believe that's what was provided, yeah.
Never mind. Hold on one second.
Does he need it is to resend the link?
I'm, I'm, I'm doing it through, um, he wanted me to send it to his phone because he's on, he's on the road. So hold on one second. How do you do that? Like, huh, sorry, my technology, um, skills are a little slow on that end. One second.
So we have some time, so just.
There you go. Here we go. Copy link. I found it. I just sent him the link. Anyways, um, uh, just so everyone, uh, knows, um, Ray's background with IBF Hospitality, um, he was an investment banker with Goldman Sachs at age nineteen. And, um, their family is, uh, uh, very solid in terms of, um, for their investments. They don't have equity partners in all of their assets. And, um, they, they have, um, uh, what was I going to say? Oh my God. Um, they have, um, reinsurance company that they recently sold, um, last year. And that's where, uh, a lot of the cash that's coming from for all of our acquisitions that we've been doing. As I've said, um, I'm part of his group that were forming a REIT by September of twenty twenty-two and we're going IPO. And obviously this Daly City deal will be part of that IPO and REIT. So it's very exciting, um, endeavor, uh, to be part of that journey with him and, um, the family office that obviously he's involved with, um, in Dallas, which are his parents and himself. So they're also, um, um, original hot hotel folks on his mother's side. Um, they all have, um, hotel background and they're, um, one of the top ten landowners of Walmart, Walgreens, Home Depot, Costco, Amazon Fresh, um, TJ Maxx, Home Goods, McDonald's throughout the U S and to name more. We're also forming our triple net REIT, not just the hotel REIT. So they're both getting launched in September of twenty twenty-two. So this, this deal and, um, originally I proposed to have Marriott by Sheraton, Sheraton by Marriott. I apologize. And, um, now we're going boutique on this. We're still going to stand on the same, um, proposed, um, room count with involving the community with all the local, um, um, events that are happening within the community. It's still the, the same approach as how I've, um, foreseen this project to be. It's, it's not changing. Just because my partners have changed, um, that doesn't change what we were proposing originally for Daly City. Daly City will still, you know, thrive as, um, as an entire city and it will be a community-driven project. I'm so sorry. Would you like me to go through the, um, the deck, Ken, or, um, do you have that with you, um? I thought Joseph was. Ken?
Yes.
Oh. Do you have the deck?
Which deck?
We submitted that you wanted us to go through that. How, how would you?
I, I don't know which deck you're referring to. Is it the?
The RFP that we submitted.
Overall RFQ? The overall RFQ submittal?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we necessarily have that available to go through. It's up to you if you want to present anything.
Okay.
Do, or you can talk through that. But we don't have that to display necessarily. I know the council members have reviewed it.
Okay. All right. Well, that, that's, um, that's been my, um, um, I just wanted to address some of the council members', uh, um, concern that, um, because of, because of, uh, especially, uh, I think Vice Mayor, uh, Ray, um, Buena Ventura, um, was very concerned that, uh, as I had to pull out of the DDA, um, scenario last year due to unforeseen events with my, um, ex-partners. It's just didn't work out at the end of the day. So I had to like move on and find another way to make this dream happen. And I apologize truly from the bottom of my heart, but I wasn't going to give up. So that's my, uh, sincere, uh, you know, um, thoughts for this project. Uh, ultimately you guys will, um, choose who you want, who's best, but, um, I've been involved in this for a very long time. And it's the same focus and it's the same drive that I have that will make this project come to fruition. And we don't need a loan. That's a, that's a huge thing because we have, um, Ray Bahai has the cash to make this deal happen. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Um, we're, we're waiting for Ray to, um, come on, correct? Because I, I'd, I'd like to, you know, provide the opportunity and space to, um, present your best and I just feel bad if to cut it off right now. Um, Tatum, I don't know you, you have a.
Yeah, I just wanted to let.
I said that five minutes at eight eleven, my time here at, um, so I just texted him. I apologize. As I've said, we planned on this for seven forty Pacific time and, um, um, me, I'm in my room because I'm not feeling well, but unfortunately he's on the road. So he's just still driving, but I did send him the link. And then I'll have him, uh, speak once he gets on.
Mayor, Mayor, maybe we can start by just asking her some questions if she's comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to that as well. Um, Ms. Kanta, is it okay to provide you with some questions that we?
Yes, sir.
Have in council? Okay.
Yes, sir. No problem.
Okay. All right. So, uh, I guess we'll go in the same order as we had. So I see Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. So go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kanta. Um, I'm sorry you're not feeling well, but thank you. And we're a little early. So thank you for, for being here. So, um, we have a set of questions that we asked each, each of the applicants. And so mine is question number six. Um, open and equitable hiring practices are of great importance to the city. Please describe your approach to recruiting and selecting contractors, consultants and future tenants or employees if applicable. Please also describe your approach to the use of union labor for construction and or operations. And in addition, in addition to that, when utilizing a general contractor or subcontractors to provide state accredited approved apprenticeship, providing the, them healthcare, local hire and Bay Area standard wages. And I don't mind repeating that if you don't mind. I mean, if you need, need me to. No, 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 not at all. So in, um, previous projects that we've had, um, Councilmember, uh, Pamela, uh, just so you know, we, we do an RFP. We can send it out to people and it's the G C that we will deal with in terms of, um, in terms of them bidding the job. And then the G Cs will then, um, send it out to subcontractors and so on and so forth. And we can include that in our, um, RFP to them that they must, um, welcome the locals from Daly City to apply and to bid on the job. Absolutely. And, uh, that's not a problem at all. And, um, in terms of employment, future employment, um, we just brought in, uh, Mr. Ken Green, who was, uh, the head of Asian American Hotel Owners Association to head our, um, um, uh, the hospitality side since we're forming the, uh, Real Estate Investment Trust. And he will be part of, um, that hiring process with the operations team. And definitely it will be, uh, an open, um, opportunity for Daly City because we want for Daly City locals to, to be involved in, in our project versus having outsiders to, to come in. Of course, with all the, um, with all the, um, qualifications, um, and that will be posted ahead of time. If they're interested in, you know, uh, we're encouraging a lot of, because Ken's involvement right now is, um, very deep in the hotel industry. Um, there are so many programs right now, even if locals wants to get a degree in hospitality management, there's a scarcity in employment in this because of the pandemic for two years now. There's no workers anywhere nationwide. I even have to clean rooms and, uh, do housekeeping in front desk. That's how bad it is. And it's still an ongoing prob- problem because Amazon, um, is taking whatever, whoever they can take. And, um, in terms of union, uh, labor, uh, what we propose, um, originally for the construction and, um,
Originally for the construction and um. The construction, um, it's gonna be prevailing wage and then for um. For operations, it will be living wage. So we're very supportive of that. And by the way, I just wanted to let you guys know, uh, Ray is on. He's just muted, but he called, he. He did the calling in because he's in the car. So um, that's him right there. Ray Bahai, Mr. Ray Bahai, the CEO and Chairman of IBF Hospitality. Um, Ray, would you mind unmuting yourself so you can introduce yourself to the council members? And Mayor and Vice Mayor of um uh Daily City?
Absolutely. Councilman Mayor, pleasure to be on. Sorry, I cannot see you folks in person. It's just a. Traveling from Houston to Dallas on, on a vehicle, it's just been crazy. Uh, we stopped over to get on a call with you guys. Miss Kanta is correct. We've uh, we've got substantial platforms in our company. To have both debt and equity in hand and. Available to deploy. We started a platform where we're also. Deploying uh hard money and bridges to other construction projects. In both industrial, retail and hospitality. This is a market that I believe has potential, immense potential over time. Considering what is going on in both. California and especially in Northern California with COVID. I, and once COVID is over. I believe this market will take off. And in, irrespective of what I'm saying in um about Northern California, the reason why. I have that presumption is I was with a couple of my investment bankers that we talked with in New York. And we believe uh we're doing two REITs. One is a triple net hosp- uh triple net uh single tenant REIT. Which we're about to invest actually in Northern California in Whole Foods. And another is uh the hospitality. We believe that Northern California has more potential to be a booming town once COVID is over. Considering all the new technology and phases that it's bringing out uh the Silicon Valley and San Francisco is bringing out. And. With that said in mind. If you have such a large incubator, you also bring out leisure and other activities. And let's not forget, state of California is one of, is the most beautiful state. Got the best climate, it's got the coast, got the mountains. It has everything it needs to be successful. And it is a successful state. With COVID being gone. I assure you, we will make this a very outstanding hotel. Um, because we will be open by that time, once construction, construction, I believe, uh. Miss Kanta is what, we're banking what, two, two and a half years, I believe?
Uh, we were at three years, including um uh the drawings. And we can start uh preliminary drawings and uh city approvals. Since we are not dealing with a brand, it cuts short um because we just deal with ourselves and the city and no brand involved.
Perfect. So that will, that will definitely. Make our lives much easier and plus. Considering our financial capacity, we can get this project moving very quickly. We have many verticals in our companies to help us get these projects off the ground. And I believe that with Eileen's intense dedication to this project. Along with her uh affluent and. Knowledge that she has of California. I don't see a reason why this project cannot be successful.
Alright, so um. I just have a quick question. Will there be a slide deck being presented or should we just go ahead and proceed with questions?
We're both here. You can, you can.
Okay.
Ask any questions you want. We're.
Alright.
Hey. Enjoying for anything else?
Okay, so let's just go down the line. We had uh council member, how would be Giovanni already asked her question? I'll move it on to Councilmember Glenn Sylvester with his question.
Okay, um, let me check the screen. Okay, yeah, I see I'm live. Okay, um. I guess um the questions I've been asking pertains to financial. And basically I feel that that's been answered already without, without even having to ask the question. So I'm gonna take the opportunity at this time to change up a question and give you the following. I guess this is from um, Ms. Kanta. Will you as a proposed project developer also be managing the operations? And services envisioned in your conceptual plan? Have you estimated the number of construction-related and permanent jobs that your project will potentially generate?
Yes, Councilmember um Glenn Sylvester, um. Uh, we will, we have our own operations um management team. As I've said, we just brought in Mr. Ken Green. Um, who's very versed in this um, um side of the business and um. It's really hard to predict how many employment. Uh, employees rather will be at for construction. It, it will vary from. Two hundred to three hundred depending on um, um. The load of the work that they're doing because each trade will not overlap each other. It will be a- as scheduled and they will come back when they're needed and they will do their tasks. At the time that's allotted for them. And then for employment, as I've mentioned and I've um answered um. Councilmember Pamela's um question earlier that uh. For, for staff for the hotel, it's probably gonna range um from part-time to full-time employee. For a typical two hundred um room um boutique hotel, Ray is around. What, about fifty to seventy-five? Do you agree with me, Ray, including um?
No, no. No, considering part-time and everything on two hundred. Uh, with the, with the dynamic bar and everything, considering what's going on in the market, I would say you're in the hundred and fifty. To a hundred and twenty, hundred, two hundred to hundred twenty-five. Let's be conservative.
Okay, uh, thank you very much.
You, um, I'll hand it over to Councilmember Justlin Manalo for the next question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. My next question is, you know, the city intends to sell the land at fair market value. Not involving any financial subsidy. Will your proposal reflect this understanding? Um, if not, what is the expectation?
What we proposed um in our RFQ, um, um, Councilmember um Manalo. Uh, is basically working with the city on what would benefit the city in this juncture. Since we've gone through um, um, this exercise in the past. So we are willing to negotiate with you guys, um, since we are not asking for any um TOT. Rebate as the city is just a growing city in terms of hospitality. So whatever we did propose um, um in our RFQ. If you guys are uh willing to work with us, we are uh definitely um. Going to be in negotiating terms with you in order to make this deal happen. Do, did you agree with me on that, Ray? Do you agree with me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question is the, the concepts outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both. The proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community and economic benefits, for example, tax revenues. And amenities that your project will provide if it is selected. Thank you.
As I mentioned, um Vice Mayor Buena Ventura, I, I've mentioned that earlier. Um, definitely the, the tax benefit is whatever the current standing of um. TOT tax rate uh for Daily City. I think you guys were at twelve percent when we initially. Started this exercise and I'm not sure where you're at currently. I think you're at fourteen, if I'm not mistaken. And that's really uh, a great um opportunity and um incentive for the city and also. Um, there's city programs that uh we included in our community um outreach. With um involving local events and um having um. The hotel be the center of it all for Daily City. As I've said, not just for the locals, but within the neighboring communities for the Bay Area. And initially in the past, um, we've reached out to uh all the uh um country clubs. Uh, within five minutes proximity of this site. And they're very excited, especially PGA is um moving to um. To the, to the Bay Area and that will be just one of the um benefits. That Daily City will have once our hotel is in play. Um, we will be working um with a lot of the businesses in the surrounding areas. To make sure and especially Elizabeth Seaton Hospital to offer um benefits for families. That are um, that have patients at the hospital. There are so many um opportunities that we can touch. That will involve the local community of Daily City. And we'll definitely have um income stream that um, that will drive the, Daily City's uh revenue.
Alright, um. Last, I'll ask one more question. So please describe the approach to your proposed land use. To what extent has an analysis of the market feasibility been performed and what were the related findings?
Mayor, do you mind repeating that? You kind of got cut off my internet. Sorry.
So please describe the approach to your proposed land use. To what extent has an analysis of the market feasibility been performed and what were the related findings?
Um, the, the land use will be obviously hundred percent hotel. And that will be a mixed-use retail um that will have us, you know, uh. Restaurants that can have access to street, street um. Uh, on the street, sorry. Um, and um, and also we will have uh, we proposed originally that we will. Provide access for the bart. So uh, we'll have a, a dedicated access for the bart station. That will connect to the hotel and um. That's uh, and then we are proposing that rooftop, not on the roof, but on the like. Um, fourth floor level or something like that, mezzanine level. Um, that will have a rooftop bar that can bring uh locals and um. Um, neighboring cities alike to come and enjoy uh what we can offer. And definitely having a um, um. Street then like street um retail visibility uh will, will draw. A lot of attention, not just having to enter into a hotel lobby and then you go access um all the uh. Food and beverage um within the hotel. So we are proposing some off a street and also within the hotel. Um, access.
Hey, thank you so much, Ms. Kanta. I know, you know, there's a lot of under stress and.
So sorry, I just don't feel well. I'm, I'm just like really struggling right now, but I'm here.
I'm wishing you um better health and.
Thank you.
We, you'll, you know, health as well and that's what I'm wishing for you. And um, yeah, no problem. Um, I guess so, um, I'll ask staff in terms of um. Next steps, uh, what are, you know, I know we, we, we can go until eight thirty. Um, what are our um options for? To move on for next steps?
So I think I kind of touched on it uh before, but the expectation now is that staff will put on the agenda. At a regular council meeting, an opportunity for the council to discuss the proposals. And at that time decide if they'd like to bring all of the developers back to give um. A more refined proposal and perhaps um, you know, maybe the, the council can uh. Create a second round of questions for a second round of interviews. The council could also narrow down the list, uh, if they want to narrow it down so that um they can. Do a little deeper dive with each of the developers or they, you know, they may have, the council may have uh. Seen someone that they think they're, they're ready to select. So we will provide a space on a future uh council agenda. Um, maybe as soon as the meeting on the twenty-eighth to give time to the council. To um direct staff um as to who they'd like to bring back. And then we will create a, a second process um for vetting that group of developers.
Great, thank you so much, um, Tatum for your guidance. I guess uh we heard for a presentation, different angles and I think in conclusion. All the proposals are here to generate activity and activate a space that has been long overdue in Daily City. And something that we all want. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the presenters, all the applicants. On pro- um, on presenting today and, you know, we'll talk to you all soon. So. Thank you so much. Thank you to staff for providing your time, my colleagues as well. Um, everybody have a good night, rest well.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Good night.
Bye bye, everybody.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
Bye.